Thursday, April the 25th. This meeting is being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the internet by accessing bucksportmain.gov and selecting agendas and minutes and choosing this meeting and clicking on the video button next to the meeting. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling three zero seven eight zero three zero. And I will remind everyone it's a great time to make sure your electronic devices are on vibrate or silent. Roll call, George.
Counselor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Paul Govan.
Here.
Counselor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bissonnet.
Here.
Counselor Dan Holmesby.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Steve Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Ed Brankton.
Here.
George, presentation of any town council recognitions. This evening. Next is consider minutes of previous meetings. There are two. We have a meeting, a meeting from April the 11th as well as our budget meeting on April the 18th. We'll assume everyone's had a chance to review those.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor? Opposed? Next is receive and review correspondence. We have three items. We have two police calls from Orland, both on April the 4th, and a Verona police call on the following day, April the 5th. Any questions on those? Next is second reading. Ordinances to consider introduced. The first there is a second reading of the short-term rental ordinance. Do we need to call that in?
We have, we have some information that's been submitted to the council since that. Letters, et cetera. They're, the public hearing on this is down here at the bottom, which is where I A may change it, fix it, throw it in a trash, other discussions that happened in the, you know, under the public hearing portion. But I would note that we do have received information from people in advance of the meeting and shared those with you that I've received.
What if, unless there's any objection, can we move the public hearing to now?
Can do anything you want.
Well, yeah. Careful. I think we should do that. All right, let's go ahead and do that. We'll go ahead and open the, we'll move down to item 12 on the agenda. And A, B, and C are in one way or another, all related to this. But we'll open the public hearing for the short-term rental ordinance. And we'll open the floor to the public.
Thank you all. I'm Ron Russell. For those of you who I hope know me, but may not. I live on Vron Island and I own two properties here in Bucksport. Fifteen Central Street, which I acquired from the town, and Eighteen Federal Street, which is now a vacant lot because I had the building removed. So I sort of been busy the last couple of weeks. And thanks to Counselor Eastman, he sort of filled me in a little bit about that short-term rentals where ordinance was being discussed. So I sort of apologize for not staying up to date, but. So I would say this, I spent a little time today and I think the council's wise to get ahead of this sooner rather than later. However, in the short time I had today, I reviewed what was done in two thousand and twenty-one in Bar Harbor and in the same year Camden came up with sort of an ordinance on short-term rental. And I'm familiar with how it's sort of factors into housing in the state. It's a big subject over in Augusta. Taking a lot of the funds that are available. I know just in this supplemental budget, there's about thirty percent of the funds went to one source of housing or another. And certainly workforce housing and affordable housing is a big topic. So in my case, and I think a few others that I know around Bucksport, I bought the property from the town I bid on in Fifteen Central Street and didn't, you know, didn't really know the state of the building because as has been the case, I guess, in many, you sort of don't get a chance to really look in it. But I got it. I was glad I wanted to make an investment in the town. I had spent forty-two years with the company and very early on myself and one other non-family member got some stock and we helped it grow into something much bigger than when we started. And when I retired in seventeen, the family wanted it back, which was sort of expected. So with those funds, since I'd been sort of doing some volunteer work for a while in town, I felt that an investment in the town was appropriate for those funds. So I bought the building, hired a local contractor from Verona, and then started to rehab the building. My intent in the beginning, I think the requirement too, when I bought it, was that it would remain multiple units. It had two units in there when I finally got in. And I wouldn't say they were thought out very well. It had a couple of doors blocked off with a sheet of plywood that sort of made from one house into two.
Can, not to interrupt, we're, I'm getting reports that the, the audio that's going out is very staticky. And so if I could ask, I'm, I'm just gonna ask our
Sure.
IT guru in the back room to just do a sound check on what's going on. Because otherwise I will have a hundred such as in a minute saying, we can't hear you, which may or may not be related to us depending on it. If people are watching on the cable channel, the, the issues are more pronounced. If you're watching on streaming, generally your video and audio is better. And that's because the location of the channel on the spectrum scheme of channels is far out and not one of the closer ones. Yes, Rich? No, is that, sound is okay?
It's a little scratchy, yeah, and we're working on it right now.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
So, is it okay?
Oh, please.
I don't wanna, you know, make this too long. But anyway, I started to rehab the building and as is the case in many old buildings, I suspect in Bucksport, it needed a lot of work. And so plans sort of changed. I, I brought some photos that were done for the listing. And I thought maybe it might be giving you an idea of sort of what happened. If you look at the ones in the back first, you get an idea of what had to happen in the building. So essentially, the whole building was emptied out. It was just a big hollow with two pieces of steel holding it together. So both floors, the floor joints were all replaced. All the roof rafters were replaced, it got a new roof. And then it turned out that the outside walls were not sufficient. So we had to build inside walls, an additional set of walls, all the way around the open box. And then out of that, in the L, I made a two-story, one-bedroom apartment, about nine hundred square feet. And then in the front part, two sort of twin, two-bedroom apartments stacked on top of each other. And by the time I was done and along the way, I decided that probably the rehab, the way it was going, I couldn't really support the building and the investment I made with regular rentals. So I decided to enter the short-term market. Not really knowing, because I didn't, there wasn't a lot in Bucksport at the time, I don't think. I'm not sure how much is still here. But the building came out well, they did a good job. I mean, which Osborne put in some space-age heating system that's really efficient. And I listed it starting in the first apartment in August of twenty. It took seconds for it to book and it's continually booked for the last three and a half years. Been very successful. I sent you all some stats that I can take off my super host Airbnb account. It's hosted in excess of twenty-five hundred people, four hundred and twenty-four separate bookings. Had two hundred and fifty-five reviews, except for, I think, a number I could count on one hand. They've all been five-star reviews. The interesting thing is that it has a keypad for a lock. You put in their code and they mysteriously come and then mysteriously leave. And the apartment every time is the same as when they went in. It looks exactly the same when they leave. And it's still, those pictures, if you went up there, you would have thought they're taken today. So when I saw and finally read last night, the proposed short-term rental, I thought, you know, this is gonna be very difficult for me in this particular building. If I take out two of the apartments and go to market rates, it'll put me in a, from part of our income to probably a losing position. So there's that. And I, you know, I thought whoever did the, as it now sits, I saw many of the safety issues, which are not a problem. The insurance is already set. Pretty much everything except put the sign in the door and have somebody inspect it. It's ready to go. So, and I did notice in Bar Harbor, when they did theirs, it looks like they grandfathered in the people that were already there. Maybe I read it wrong, but it looked that way. They have two classifications now. They have a VR one and a VR two, which is about the same as everybody. They have a residential and a commercial. Basically, if you live there or if you don't. And it varies the short period of time I had to look at it. But I, and according, I also, Airbnb gives you a figure of what people spent locally. I pared that back and it looks like, if you can believe what they say, and basically all I've done, I hired somebody in the beginning to sort of do the Airbnb part, which you can pretty much do on your phone. And, and I currently have a, Jean and I have an employee, Corey Ames from the island. He's worked for us for, this is the fourth year. And about three-quarters of his pay is tied to the Airbnb. So it would be difficult for us to, you know, continue that arrangement. And the other concern that I have is that the, from a cash flow point of view, the value of the building would change quite a bit. Pretty much to the tune of all the equity I have in the building. Because I did go pull some of the money out in the mortgage. So it's concerning to me that people, which I don't think is a big number. I didn't see any data to go with it, that have made sort of the leap to upgrade a building in town, that this could negatively affect their position in a building. And I, I think, at least the two that I looked at, there was consideration of that. Both that as long as you continue to renew whatever license or requirement there was in a town, it looked like they could maintain their status that they had prior to and they could pass that along if they sold it. They couldn't give it to, you know, just transfer it to somebody else. So that would be a suggestion I would make. Maybe a couple of others, once I looked into it. But it's certainly personally a concern to me to make a good faith investment in the town and then through regulation, that that would change somewhat. And I do think in my particular case, I probably think it, just knowing how it works, it might not work out that well to have two as regular market rentals and one as a Airbnb. I haven't really thought that through, but that's what it would be under this reg. So, you know, I certainly could divulge the numbers if you wanna know. I mean, it's.
Ron, do you have all three as short-term?
Yeah, I do. And there's a little misunderstanding, I think, how short-term sort of works. Mark said to me in our discussion last night, well, you'd still have, I, the great thing has been I've had medical personnel in the wintertime at a reduced rate, but still higher than market rate. To, to duplicate what I've got, I would need a market rate of about three thousand dollars a month. And I just don't think that's here in Bucksport. I certainly wouldn't wanna be the first one that, that pushed it to that. But, so what happens with the medical, they've been mostly nurses, even though I did have the replacement physician down in Castine all winter, that was in there for six months. So what happens is, what makes it short-term is at the end of twenty-eight days, you really have like a new agreement. Because otherwise, what you'd have to do is a short-term lease. And my read on that is, you would never get them to do it. It's just too, it's usually an agency that's booking for them and they would book it and pay for it. And one example of why I don't think they would come and personally sign a three-month lease that's renewable for another three months is because it would be a hassle for them. And so in Maine, if you stay twenty-eight days or more, you can get the, the lodging tax rebated. I give all the people that come and stay with me the way to get that rebate. They never go for it. It's a lot of money. I mean, the, the lodging tax, nine percent. I think I told you in there, I looked it up. I mean, it's just a spreadsheet that's on Airbnb, but so far I've collected something like thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars of state of Maine lodging tax. So from a point of view of the state of Maine, they probably wouldn't be happy if I stopped that. I, I do think, I saw in a couple of the things I looked, a threshold of nine percent that in Camden, they do a lottery when the, the number, first of all, residential, they can have unlimited. But on the commercial side, I think both of them went to nine percent. And in Bar Harbor, it looked like if somebody dropped out, who's ever on the list gets to be next. And in Camden, they did a lottery if there were, you know, space available. The other thing I would say is there, I did refer today to a Maine housing study that was completed in October twenty-three. I looked at that again. And while in some communities, the, the amount of housing stock in short-term rentals is pretty high. I mean, like twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent. But it turns out that statewide, the competing with affordable housing percentage is very low. So in other words, most of the, in a town like Camden or Bar Harbor, of the rentals are in properties that people couldn't afford.
I read the same study, Ron, and I was thinking about that. If it's okay to.
Please.
Yeah, and I think for a housing system to flow, to look at it sort of, a unit may not be affordable for a low-income person. But if it's affordable for, say, a workforce, higher-income person, that household is not filling a low-income household apartment. So it keeps the system flowing.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. So it, it's just important to look at it with a lens that just because it's not for a low-income person, if I could rent it,
Yeah.
then I would be moving out of a cheaper apartment for somebody else who could afford it. Because I read the same study.
Right.
It's about ten percent in Hancock County and three percent
Right.
that they're considering affordable, yeah.
Yeah, the other dilemma that's certainly a dilemma for this town is illustrated in Eighteen Federal Street. So Larry got that balls from the town in a tax sale. And Larry, you know, believes in old buildings and I think he could fix just about anything. But he gave up on that one and I eventually did too. The sad part to me is, is that both of those buildings, when, I don't know what happened with the one on Federal, but had people living in them. And it was very, very, very substandard. So the dilemma becomes with these older homes, how do you, how do you fix them up in this environment and with costs so that you can make them affordable housing? It's, I, I'm not sure, it's, it's very tough to sort of figure it out. Now, what I would say is, you know, what's the answer for the town? I, I don't know. I'd probably say something, and Sue will look at me like I'm crazy. But, you know, there's lots of towns that have, you know, a housing department now and are taking advantage of some of these programs that the state's putting out and the federal government. I mean, there's a lot to it. You have all these Section Eight housing complexes around that are nearing their forty-year term. And those, the owners can bring them out and do what they like with them. In Portland, they're turning them into, you know, market-rate apartments, which is not affordable for workforce housing. So it is a dilemma. And I think my suggestion would be try to collect the data, you know, just to see what is the penetration in Bucksport. And I would exclude, you know, seasonal homes like camps, because that's not workforce housing. And you might have an idea of what the penetration is. Just from a few times that I've gone on to look at my own listings, it doesn't look like it's very deep to me, but certainly Luke would know. Mark told me that there was a program along the way. It wasn't there when Luke and I met about, you know, what permits do I need? Do I need to register as a short-term thing? That was in eighteen nineteen. But Mark seemed to indicate that you've made one change to register them. I have never done that. I didn't, wasn't aware of it, if that's the case.
Couple of questions for you when you're ready.
Sure.
I believe Luke has a lot of data on this when I was chairing the planning board.
Sure.
This first came up and Luke's been working on this in the wind for a couple of years, trying to do the right thing with this ordinance he came up with. You have now, make sure we stay, make sure I'm factual here. You have no issue with the permit process, the life safety end of things?
No, no.
You have no issue with that? Your issue is the numbers of your, the units in your building being determined to have to be full-time rentals and not, not short-term rentals. Is that correct?
Not even really a problem with that going forward. And I'd have to dig into it deeper, because I suspect there probably are things like that. One of them I noticed, when they said it was not owner-occupied, looked like it, it couldn't do all of them, but could do a, you know, bigger number than in my case. You absolutely are gonna have to come up with it. I think the one thing that's hard for me is, I would have gladly been involved in this process. But the hard part for me is the people that are existing now. Is it fair to go backwards, especially early in the process?
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but this is not early in the process is, is what I'm getting at. This has been, this has been.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know the, the data, Steve, on how far, how many houses have been done.
But other, but that's, that's your, that's where you're at.
Well, it's just because it's financial for me.
Right. And it's, it's the units. It's not the rest of the ordinance or any of the, the safety stuff. It's just the fact that you would like to be considered to be grandfathered for the amount of units that you have to continue operating as you are.
I would, and I would also like to sort of try to be involved a little bit so that Bucksport, I mean, I'm involved in Bucksport real estate anyway, just to be, not just for myself. I mean, I know Jack's behind me. He's making an investment in that Alex and Lisa up at the school. I mean, they're, I guess it's a little bit different how they did it, but, you know, it's, I think it's a problem for the existing folks. And I'm not talking about camp Airbnbs, I'm talking about in town. And I suspect, because I see work in some of these old buildings, that there are probably quite a few in process. So that's why I say it's good to get this going. But is it already to the point where it's more than nine percent of the housing? I don't know.
There's multiple reasons for this beyond analyzing affordable housing. It is concerns over neighborhood change and the conversion of single-family homes in residential neighborhoods. If someone bought two or three houses up in Rich's neighborhood and turned those into multiple Airbnbs, it would
Right.
it would change the entire character of the neighborhood to, from a neighborhood to a transient location. There's concern about that. That, that's a piece of the
Sure.
it, 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 it doesn't create neighborhoods. And so, so looking to find ways to allow people to utilize their property to generate income reasonable, but Luke has done a lot of research on this, that the idea of, of how many units that we have in town that are, fit this category, that have more than three, I, I don't think we have a lot that qualifies as this. The ones that you talked about at the massana call don't. They're not the same, they're, they don't have full kitchens, they're, it's a whole different class than Airbnb. So they're not involved in, in that discussion. But we've talked internally about, do we make the downtown district different? Because it's, it's less neighborhood-y right along the main street than it is some of our, our outlining areas? Or do we take a look at what the number should be in order to? Because it will tell you that I agree with Luke. We need to do something sooner rather than later in the the longer we wait, the more this grandfather, I, I didn't know. I've got twelve, you know, that, that becomes an issue. And, and so if the number, if the number were three, nobody would be disadvantaged. And it would give the town a place to start in terms of this that, um, that would be more reasonable in terms, it wouldn't disenfranchise you or the gentleman who's putting in units in the downtown right now. But as I said, what I, what I hope we don't do is turn this into a science project that goes on for six more months and by the end of it,
Sure.
everybody that's thought about it has now doubled the size of what they're gonna do because the permitting is changing.
Right.
I tend to agree with Sue on that because it's, I, I was reading a lot today, a lot of reports, the Maine Housing One and others, and the city of Ellsworth's also taking this up. And Ellsworth's the second most popular place for single-family homes being turned into Airbnb. And so if we don't get out in front of this, we're, we're gonna have problems in our town. And I agree with Luke as well. I think we can find a sweet spot for those who are already here. Like, because this doesn't affect camps with cabins, as far as I'm aware.
Well, it does to a degree.
To a degree, if it has kitchens and things like that.
A bathroom.
And bathrooms. Um, it doesn't affect homes with rooms. And so I think it's very specific to the housing that we're short of. Workforce, families, couples.
Remember though, both of these were multi-unit buildings.
Right, yeah.
And they weren't as neighborhood-y, because it was transient, sort of in and out, I believe, in most of these. In these two in particular. The, the good thing about the lot for me is that now the building's gone, I don't really have a desire to put more Airbnbs on Federal Street. In fact, I've, it's not working out as great as I'd like it to be, but I even In fact, I've, it's not working out as great as I'd like it to be, but I even, I don't have plans right now. So I offered it up for the group that was looking for a place to put a garden. But it's, it's turning into a little bit harder than I thought, that they thought. But anyway, we're working on it. But that would be, you know, again, it would be, how do you do it? And not build, I mean, I heard what the house sold for on the, at the traffic light. And it's just, is that gonna solve what we need? I mean, over there, probably not.
It kind of goes back to the housing flow.
I've got a couple of questions for Luke.
Sure, but don't get me wrong. I think it's good you're doing it. I think it's, it's great for the thing. I, but I have my, you know, personal concerns just because of the financial position I'm in there. And it would be, and I'm sort of boxed in. I mean, it's like, if I turn it into three rental units at market rates, am I gonna have the same results? I mean, you can talk to any of the neighbors. I've talked to them all the time. But I think you'll find that they've been delighted. I don't think it's ever been on a police blog or anything like that. But the other lot's good. I mean, it's a double lot, so it's already got sort of parking laid out. Should be able to do something for somebody there. What I'd really like to do is maybe multiple units at market rates, but I'm not with the cost of funds and all of that. I, it's just, I mean, I heard what the ones were gonna be on Main Street. I came to the hearing when you were here and there getting up where, maybe they'll even be up where I could do it. I don't know. But mine are specifically set up for, you know, the, even the place for your clothes is built in. I mean, it was all sort of designed by, to be for that use. Anyway.
We're gonna, you have a couple of questions for, I know there are other members of the public too, so. I just have a couple of questions for Luke, just to establish a, a little bit of a baseline before we move on to a couple of other people. In, in the event that a grandfathering scenario for people that are using their properties now for Airbnbs were, were to be considered. Would it be reasonable to, or possible to, is the number few enough that you know what they are? And could you just apply them? Could we leave that with you? Or would we need to do some sort of like thirty day to sixty day filing period of an existing Airbnb? Before this ordinance were to take effect? What possibilities are there for that?
There's four that I know of.
Okay.
Does that include the ones that are currently under construction Luke? Or just the ones that are?
There's four existing that have at least two units.
And then there's some under?
Counting the one way over.
There's some that are under construction now?
In town.
There's at least one in town that I know of.
To be an Airbnb specifically?
That was there in town, yeah.
Okay. My only issue with that scenario is that if you're spending money, investing.
Towards?
Towards accomplishing a financial goal because there aren't rules stopping you for it. I feel that would really shortchange them halfway through the process financially now that we enact it. So I'd like to think about what scenario we could to show a little bit of respect to that, but also accomplish our goal with our, with our housing scenario as well. I don't, I don't like the idea of changing, changing the rules halfway through or after the money's been invested. But I would like to see this move forward as well. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, and I could see the safety issues moving forward, you know, and then take up the rest of it in a subsequent conversation and try to get some input from some people that are in it and, you know, some other sources of information.
This also shouldn't be one of those things that we kick the can down the road either. Luke's been into this for quite a while and it's, it's written up. It's in front of us and we're ready to go. But this, this major element that I'm seeing is.
The ratio.
Of the people that I have money invested that's existing.
And it doesn't account for those that are in process.
Right, and I think, I, I mean, that, that would be fair, which is where I have that question of, is that, is that a thing? Could that be a thing of some sort of thirty day filing or scenario for, for an existing Airbnb? So for, so there's a window before this would take effect to hurt anybody that has money invested.
They would still be subject to the safety and all that.
Absolutely.
The only thing you would grandfather is the number of units.
Absolutely, yeah.
Everything else would be.
Yeah, and I think we should, safety wise, it should stay consistent.
Mayor, have a question please. Using Mr. Russell's building, he has three, three, three units there that he doesn't live in. What's the, what does it matter, um, short-term, long-term? I'm just asking. I mean, I, I.
Long-term puts two, two permanent families or couples or whatever in there versus transient in and out.
And I think the worst case scenario with Airbnb is just that somebody's having party, you know, a big party at the house, you know, it disturbs. I've not encountered that, but I know it's out there.
So that's what we're trying to prevent type of thing, right?
That and, and sustain housing that for year-round people as well.
And I think it's an important timing because more and more units are coming offline for people who live here or trying to live here and work here year-round. It's, it's gone up fifty-eight percent in three years in Hancock County.
All the time. Peoples, they're having people move out. They're fixing it up a little bit and putting on Airbnb. So we're losing apartments left and right.
I, I do think there'll be a saturation point with this. And I think a lot of it was attributed to low interest rates for a number of years that they could come up here and buy a house. But, you know, as the values go up and the interest rates go up, I don't know that we're gonna see the same pace that we saw.
How crucial is this to our moving forward, Luke, that this continue to move forward with its momentum that we've had on this? This is, this is kind of late in the game to be asking this large of a question. But how important is this that we continue with?
Ordinance, you mean?
Yeah.
I would say extremely. Even if you temporarily hold off on the limits on numbers or grandfather or whatever you decide to do, I'd like to see the rest of the ordinance go through so that we have some restrictions in place and inspections and it's, it's becoming a problem. There's some Airbnbs out there that really should not be out there.
And the impact of that's the issue is that.
Yeah.
I don't think any, there isn't much argument here about the safety side of it.
I haven't had any complaints on any of that.
Okay. That's what I needed from you.
And this doesn't impact any of the sort of the camp dwellings on the.
If it's a short-term rental, it's a short-term rental. I don't, if it's a camp or if it's an apartment or. Obviously, the number things, it wouldn't apply to that because it's just a camp. So it would just be one unit. But yes, the, if you've, if you've read through it, you see where I said, you know, if you're gonna have kayaks and stuff like that, then you need to provide life jackets and make sure they know that they're required to wear them under a certain age and all that kind of thing. So it's just a safety thing to make sure that they're following along. And same with the fire pits and stuff. Make sure that, you know, you get some of these people from New York never had a fire pit. It seems silly to us to, to think who doesn't know how to start a fire or put it out, but.
Yeah.
I, I would also wonder, Luke, you know, with the seasonal camps, if, if somebody has an outhouse and they're swimming in the lake, because that's what people have done for generations here, are we, that's gonna be eliminated, correct?
Correct.
Meaning if it's a, an approved.
Not for a homeowner, but for transient in and out, constant use, yeah.
I just wanna make sure we have some input from those people. I wanna give, I wanna, I know there are other people here, so I wanna make sure. Thank you. I just wanted those two questions. Thank you. Yep. Anyone else from the public before Jack, please?
Thank you. Hi. My name's Jack Gordon. I live on Bayview Avenue and have done so since nineteen eighty-seven. And I've also had my office here in town for twenty-plus years. So I'm just trying to establish who I am and kind of where I'm coming from, so it'll take a few minutes to talk about that. So my wife Denise and I, we own a property on the corner of Main and Third Street, one forty-seven Main Street. We bought that two years ago. And as a kind of good faith investment in Bucksport, we've been wanting for years to, to do something like that. And so that product, building came along. We bought it. We've been renting the, the front of it as a kind of commercial space. It's been a retail shop and now it's a dental office, denture office. And, and then we've undertook about eighteen months ago, building a small addition on the back. And maybe some of you have seen this thing. It's been, because I've been building it myself mostly for eighteen months. And it, it has two one-bedroom apartments. And the pro forma or the kind of the, you know, the financials for this project, and we borrowed a fair amount of money, was, is, has been based upon renting them as short-term rentals. And it's, that's been out there from day one. Like, that's, that's, that's what makes this work financially for us. And to go even deeper down that path, the, the thinking is that this is, represents passive income during our retirement. Assuming that happens. Either I make it to seventy working or I just make it to seventy period. I'll be sixty-five in a couple of months. So that's kind of the, the grand plan. And I know that, you know, that, that, you know, that, that, to me, it's important for everyone here to understand what our motivations are. You know, and, and some of what I'm going to say will undoubtedly sound self-serving and some of it is self-serving. I mean, I, I understand that. But, but there's also some things I want to say that I think could, I like to think at the risk of being a little conceited, that might help your process and help your thinking through some of these issues. And, and one thing to know is, have I mentioned this, but I'm an architect. And, and I've done a fair amount of workforce and affordable housing throughout Maine. Seventy-five plus units. Some of these are single-family, multifamily. And I've been doing this for a long time, the last twenty years. So, you know, I know a bit about this, about the, the issue. But I'm not a housing, you know, guru, you know, but, 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 but I have to, to kind of, kind of deal with some of these issues. And what, what I do know and what I think is evidenced tonight and from what we're all talking about and thinking is like, this is an evolving and a very complex issue. I get that, right? And, and, you know, I'm, I'm talking about one side of it, which is a very personal thing. And, and has, you know, pretty significant financial implications for, for my wife and I. But, and I knew that when we decided to do this project and build short-term rental apartments, that I felt a little dirty about that because like, no, I should be building, you know, apartments for people to live in, right? But, so when we ran the numbers, and I don't, I don't really wanna be a landlord selfishly, you know, and running an Airbnb or a short-term rental thing is, is a different operation. So that's, that's all the thinking behind what brings me here tonight, okay? So, and I, thanks to Ron, I just learned this morning that this was in the works, the, the short-term rental ordinance. This morning around eight o'clock. And I've had a kind of crazy day, so I've been kind of bouncing around trying to figure things out, get the ordinance, read it, talk to a few people that, that I work with and who know some of these issues. And, and try to kind of think my way through this thing and that I'll probably come tonight and talk, right? And I, I want it to be known that, so I'm gonna, gonna have, I have a few questions and they may be somewhat rhetorical. I don't know if it's gonna be a discussion, but, but the questions and then some suggestions I have are coming from the way, the way that I work, which is kind of like a critical thinking approach. So I, you know, I'd like, well, what's behind this? You know, how did we get to this point? And, you know, I was kind of surprised to hear that this has been in the works for ages. And, I mean, you know, I think I might have heard about it somehow, but I didn't and that's okay, you know? I guess, you know, shame on me for not being more, more involved and more knowledgeable. So, yeah, so I'll start with, so, so I have this list of questions. So, and I, I've learned a little bit tonight about, the first one was, you know, how was this ordinance drafted? You know, was there a committee, you know, were there community members involved? How did, what was the process? How did, how did we get to tonight? Second question is, what are, and this is a really important one, you know, and I've learned a bit more tonight from what Sue was saying earlier. But what are the, what are the, the absolute goals and objectives of, of, of doing this? Like, what, what are we trying to accomplish? And I've heard amongst you, some question about that too. Like, maybe you're, you're not real sure what we're trying to accomplish. Is it about trying to promote more market rate affordable housing options? I think that's a check from what I'm hearing, right? Is it, how do we address the issues of quality of housing? And Ron, you know, can give you a good example of that. Is, I mean, that's probably the biggest issue and that's the one I'm most involved in in my profession is knowing the quality of the housing stock in Maine and how do you, how do we upgrade that? And if there really are eighty thousand units needed throughout the state of Maine, that's the number that, that I've heard. And I've heard that on MDI, it's somewhere between eight and twelve thousand new additional, additional housing units are needed. You know, that's just not gonna happen. And improving old buildings to, to, to a certain standard at the, at today's construction costs is another big issue. So this is, I mean, I get it. This is really complex. And, but it's always, you know, important to have goals and objectives for, for what we're trying to accomplish. Was this ordinance, you know, to what extent is it based upon, you know, hard data? You know, is there, is there a housing study that's been conducted in Bucksport itself in the past, you know, X number of years? You know, that's, seems important to me. And that takes time and money, so I would imagine the answer to that is yes, but I don't know. And what, you know, what evidence is there that this ordinance will increase access to affordable long-term rentals in Bucksport? If, if that is indeed a goal, how do we know that that, and I'm not, by asking the question, I'm not suggesting, I'm not casting doubt. I'm just like, well, how, you know, because this is, this is a very complex issue that's evolving, like I've already mentioned. And the town of Bucksport is, is trying to get ahead of that and that's really important. And we won't know how successful it will be until we get further down the road and find out if it was, if it's hitting the marks or not. So, you know, I'm not suggesting that you do nothing in the meanwhile. But these are all questions that I'm assuming has been, have been thought out, you know, and, and, and being applied to the process. But I'm not, I don't know that, okay? And I think those are all valid questions to, to ask. One thing I've added here is, you know, we're talking about the impact upon neighborhoods. Sue mentioned that. So I don't know if people know this, but, you know, I live on Bayview Avenue. And to our knowledge, because there's been a lot of turnover there in the last several years since COVID and, you know, there's a lot of retirement, a lot of boomers that are even older than me and have retired and moved on or otherwise. And the last I knew, there were at least two houses on Bayview being short-term rented right now. There's a third one rumored to be under construction. And there's a fourth house not very far from mine that's, that's going to be converted to, to short-term rental. So, I mean, that's one street. That's my neighborhood. And, you know, it, you know, makes me feel a little, you know, uncomfortable. But we've been living in the midst of it for several years now. And I'm not really seeing any evidence that would make me, it's not the same neighborhood it was when we moved there forty years ago, granted. And there's more traffic up and down the street because you got more people coming and going if they're, you know, doing this, um, short-term rental. So, um, just, you know, I thought I'd just happen to think of that. Okay. Stop me and ask me questions if you feel the need, because I know I'm kind of ranting here, so I apologize for that. So my, my suggestions were, yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with what I keep hearing. Like the, the idea of, uh, the safety aspects being, being implemented and registering them and, and paying a fee. I mean, I figured all that, you know, when we, when we decided to do this. So personally, those are not issues and I think those are, those are, those are good issues to, to be addressing. And we have building codes and code enforcement officers, so I like to think that a lot of those things are, are already being applied. And do they also apply to long-term rentals? You know, I mean, there's a question. I'm not, like, should, should a long-term rental, should an apartment somehow be, be registered and subject to the same, same kind of scrutiny? Because it's safety of those, of the people that live there as well. So, you know, and if you don't do both, so then is the STR approach really a method of, of discouraging? Which I think it is, you know, I'll be frank about it. But just, you know, maybe that's what needs to happen. Uh, so again, if you were to adopt, adapt, adopt it as written minus the, the kind of the quota aspect, um, um, I think that, uh, could make sense. And then maybe you, you go forward further studying how to manage the, the, the numbers and, 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 um, see if, if, if those quotas apply. So I have two more suggestions and they're, they're both gonna, kind of, I think, I suspect, strike you as coming from maybe a little different place, but, um, um, so in the world of building codes, Luke will agree with me and know this, maybe most of you do too. But there are, um, there's the residential building codes, which are for one and two-family dwellings. And then there are the kind of non-residential, you might just call them commercial, or whatever you wanna call them. But that apply to multifamily, uh, proj- buildings, which are three or more units. So when you start thinking about the numbers aspect to it, and does it make sense to align STR oversight with the building codes? Then I might suggest that you start your quota aspects at three and more and leave one and two-family dwelling as part of the residential code and, and pull them out of the, the quota aspect. I don't know if that, if that makes sense or gets any traction, but, but when I was thinking about it today, driving around like, well, you know, that, that, that there's, there's alignment there between the building codes and, and what you're looking to, um, accomplish. Um, granted, that idea is entirely self-serving because I have a two-unit building. But it's, it's, it's something you might consider and might be considered less onerous. And then the next one, um, and the last one is a, uh, it, it may be a little harder to get, get our minds around, but, but to consider a progressive provision that recognizing that, I never thought I'd say this, but, but as property values and real estate taxes in this town continue to escalate, it becomes harder for people to maintain living in their homes. And as someone here who is approaching that retirement aspect of their life and thinking about having to, to do that, continue to pay, you know, our taxes doubled, right? And I'm not the only one, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people that do that, I think you've probably heard about that a few times, right? So, um, but, um, so in, in, in recognition of trying to preserve, um, um, our, our, our existing residents and their contribution and participation in, in the community, that you might exempt Bucksport property owners, people who live in the town of Bucksport, from any, um, limits on their quota to have short-term rentals. Because that's a significant income, um, stream for people who live in this town. And then they would be better able to afford to stay in their house because they can better able to pay their property taxes and not feel pressured to sell their house to pull their equity out of it. Because it's, and, and, and when I kind of came across this notion today, that really hit home with me because that's exactly what we're trying to do. We made an investment, a good faith investment on down, on, you know, Main Street in Bucksport, you know, our adopted hometown, and tried to, you know, fund our retirement staying here, right? And so, you know, it, it, I just think that's something to think about. I know it's not something that, uh, might be considered, um, familiar, maybe it is, I don't know. When I came across this today, I thought it was something that I would definitely want to share with you to think about. And that could also be considered in reaction to some things I heard today about opposition to, you know, investors coming from somewhere else to buy properties and kick out the residence of a, of a downtrodden apartment building and renovate it, make a significant investment and support that with STR rentals. So, that's probably enough for me. Any questions or?
Just curious, your example for that last process.
Yeah.
Where did you read about that or learn about that?
So, um, I have a, um, a, um, let me see, it's how it's, I, I promise to not reveal.
That's okay, I just, I just like to read about it and, I just like to learn a bit more about it.
Get it to you, but, but it's from a planning director at a local town who, um, is in charge of housing issues. And it's one of the towns that's been previously mentioned and they're under extreme pressure. And, and this is something that she has been made aware of, is like, this is a real awful idea and might gain some traction to kind of bring those two issues together. So, you know, is Bucksport, or is anyone ready for that? I don't know, but I thought I'd take this somewhat public, um, opportunity to, to share that idea. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I've got a really quick one, and although even while they're coming out, it's time to listen.
I, I, I know you think you do, yeah, everyone at home will disagree, yep. No matter how bad.
I'll get messages saying I can't hear.
My name's Alex, Lisa and I have done the, um, Masonic Temple. Um, and although this doesn't apply to our property, we, we, we have a little bit of feedback from our experiences. Um, we kind of get the feeling, and we knew here, that Bucksport's kind of courting a bit of a reinvention, which it has been for a while. And then one of those reinventions is tourism. Um, and part of that would be the Airbnb, you know, element of that, so that we can get people to stay here, walk down, spend money. Um, and I guess this is actually completely not self-serving because it doesn't apply to our building. But what we've noticed in Belfast, where we have another property, is a thirty percent drop-off in our rentals over there. And what's happening is, and I think it's pause for thought, is Airbnb is hitting a, a crescendo, it's hitting a plateau. Um, and I think that it could be worth, I, I don't know if Luke has done the research into that, but looking at how much further this is gonna go. Like, um, I think you mentioned that Ellsworth's the second biggest growth in Airbnb. There's a finite number of tourists, you know, you look year on year, it's not, it's not going suit up and up and up and up. And what Airbnb are reporting is they're getting more people trying to do it, but people are getting less and less rooms. So what's gonna happen eventually, presumably, um, is people are gonna go back to long-term rentals because it's not worth their while anymore. Um, and, and at this stage, from our perspective, it's a little bit of a fight to bring tourism to Bucksport because we're, we're on that curve of, of growing, developing and bringing things to the main street. And so that's just my thought, is maybe look at the projection that previously has only been up and up and up, that maybe it's, you know, and it'd be a shocker to close all this down and then in two years realize there was a, a curve and I kind of timed it wrong.
That's it, thank you so much.
Make sure I don't miss anyone.
One thing I did want to add is to remind us all, we spent how many years marketing that property over, over there? And we only saw a subsidized investment, you know, nobody, not much, except, I mean, Maine, the ones that got it aren't doing subsidized, but that was the bulk of it, because it is so hard to do it straight up. And that's where Airbnb can equal it. So, you know, what we're, we may not get all the affordable housing or, or moving up to affordable housing, but we are getting some reinvestment in properties that, you know, we might not see otherwise. Because if somebody just turns something that's subpar into something that's maybe a little bit better than subpar, I don't know that it's better housing for the people here.
Sue's point of change in the neighborhoods with the Airbnb, uh, aspect is crucial to maintaining the atmosphere that we have.
Sure.
But as we move forward, I would like to be respectful to the people that have invested money in the process to, to date.
Yep.
Do you know there was that many on Bayville, uh, Bayview?
I did not.
Me neither.
That shocks me.
So, eh, eh, I, I guess my point is, is if we knew they were changing the neighborhoods, how didn't we know? If we knew they were changing the neighborhoods.
Yep.
How come we didn't know they were, there were that many on Bayview?
Probably because we don't have a permit process, is what I think.
That's why, but, I, I, I think we.
Well, that is the harsh reality. But, I mean, I think there's more in town than, than, you know, I mean, Luke's talking about knowing about four.
There's like seventy-five listed.
There's seventy-five listed.
Nineteen active today on one website, but I was correct.
I mean, I don't mean for Airbnb's, because I have a house.
Know that it was changed, right, because he lives there.
He lives there.
Like, I think that's the point, is being, you know, even though we necessarily didn't know what he knows it.
He notices more traffic.
Well, he knows that he doesn't know his neighbors anymore.
True story.
So there is a permitting process now, it's just that most people don't report it. And unless I have time and seek them out and find them, I don't have any way of knowing that they're doing it. Um, they're supposed to get a recreational lodging permit right now, which is why we're changing appendix K if we adopt this.
Yep.
Um, and according to the ordinance right now, which we haven't been doing it, and I don't believe my predecessor did it either, uh, recreational lodging is supposed to go to planning board review before they're allowed to even have that permit. And that certainly has not been, be, being the case. So, um, but there is a process. And then the other thing I'd like to say is that this won't stop anybody from doing an Airbnb. It just lets us make it safe. The only limit it would be would be on those multi-unit buildings. But anybody that, like those three or four houses on Bayview, they can still, there's no limit to the number. So this isn't changing anything there. If that's something that you guys wanna do, that's a whole different ball of wax.
I mean, in your research of other communities, did you find many that were doing a, you know, certain percentage of the available housing units in the town, or?
Camden's looking at that, they hadn't done that, but right now fourteen percent of their housing stock is short-term rentals. And it's not sustainable.
Yeah.
Um, they're finding that they don't have the same problems we're having. They don't have workers to work their places, so their places are having to be open less hours or less days. Um, and they need employees down there because they're kind of like Bar Harbor, they depend on that, um, for their income. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of a catch-22. Um, if we exempt downtown, which was one of the ideas.
Yep.
Those are, those are units where people can walk to their job. They can walk to the stores. Uh, those are the kinds of places where you actually want the apartments. An apartment out on Jacobus Pond Road is great, but doesn't help the person that doesn't have a vehicle and, and that kind of thing. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways to look at that. And that's why I said, if you guys wanna look at all that stuff more, we could still, nobody, I haven't heard a single complaint about everything else in the ordinance.
Right.
It's just this one aspect, so we could table that, vote on the ordinance without taking out, and.
The limitations, you mean?
Right.
And talk some more about it.
And then talk more about that, and we can always amend the ordinance later. But at least this way, the regulations would be in place.
And the safety issue, you know, we'd be addressing safety.
I'm on board with that, but how could we accurately determine who would be qualified for a grandfather's status as of today? So we could accurately move forward, how could we determine?
Well, it's tough, I mean, like I said, I know that there's five if you count Jack.
Yeah.
Six if you count the Central Street fella from Utah. But I don't know.
But.
Is it possible to, to pass the order, uh, the ordinance without that particular piece, rather than grandfathering it?
And we could, as, as much as I'm trying not to.
I know you want to get it completed, but I think it'd be tough.
Completed, but at this element, we could adopt the ordinance as written, exempting section six point two point one.
Yeah.
And, and leave.
The numbers?
Yes, that, that section and, and where it reaches the amount of units.
Mm-hmm.
And then we could leave that for further, further review, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I would like to set a timeframe for that further review. I would like to, this is, I, this is not something I want to be, I'll, this is just one person, but I don't want to be discussing this in October.
Yeah.
Unless there's a, a valid reason, I think we, I would like to set a goalpost of, or a benchmark of, we are going to review this again at this, you know, in this month.
The other thing it would do, if you do that, it would, it would clearly identify to Luke where they all are now and that in order to, to go through this permitting process.
Mm-hmm.
So that when you're discussing limitations, you could accurately say that if you set the, the numbers where they are now, grandfathering the existing, that you're, you're not gonna, to negatively financially impact anyone who is. And you'd have a more accurate number than we have right now, because if you implement all the safety stuff that goes along with it, number one, you're gonna take care of the things that are not safe. Number two, you're gonna have an accurate list of what's here. And then have a conversation about how many units these things have.
And maybe get some participation from people that own them.
Is that?
Yep, that makes sense.
So what a July deadline, deadline.
Well, if we got the budget till June, you wanna say, you know, mid-August?
I, listen, whatever is the pleasure of the council, I, my statement on that was just setting a tone that we, we aren't gonna kick this down the road.
And it's another number, question mark, that's gonna fall on Luke, so what, what do you think, Luke?
I think we could talk about this till we're blue in the face and somebody's gonna be unhappy, so I.
What's a reasonable deadline to get some data for?
For choosing a direction, whether it's a overall cap or, you know, percentage thereof?
Four need be happy.
It's, it's really just up to you folks what you wanna do.
Because our conversation may say that, you know, we only, we wanna cap it at X amount. If that's what we find that other ordinances are doing and it's successful, you know, maybe we don't even cap, we cap an overall number as opposed to an individual allowable use.
Percentage or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think other towns are doing that, and it, it might make some a look at.
Percentage of housing instead of percentage, you know, for units.
It's a registry then, then you, you can have so many on it. And as someone comes off, someone goes, it's, it's.
But we could go that way or come back to the ratio, but at least have time to, you know, look at it.
I think August is a, a fair deadline to, to, to make a decision on this.
I do. It, it, if you pass this without the cap.
Yep.
Yeah.
And revisit the.
And revisit the, the information in August that we've accumulated based on what's there, then that would be.
I'd be good with that.
Time to figure someone else out.
Okay.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't bother anyone who was operating one that was met health and safety stuff.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Luke.
Yeah.
Making a note for myself.
Can I just have one little bit of information, possibly, uh, you might wanna think about it?
Sure.
One of the things that, uh, there are a lot of, uh, motels and hotels now that avail themselves of Airbnb, so you may wanna think about that. And I don't know if they do in this town, but I don't know if they fall under ordinances in other places, but you probably should.
In this ordinance, they don't, and this is actually not about Airbnb, it's about short-term rentals, BRMO or any other.
Right, right, but they're, they use them into the, that realm and world, I guess, is what I would say.
A big part of that is hotels are subject to, uh, review by the fire marshal's office as well for inspections.
And I think, I think they're exempt in the ordinance.
They're exempt in the ordinance, hotels and, and breakfasts.
Hotels and maybe boarding houses.
Yeah. One thing that, um, Bangor had that we didn't have announced was, um, they exempted tourist cabins. I'm not sure if ours did or not, but.
Well, and that, you know, that could be applicable because that's what Nichols has talked about going correct up behind the motor inn.
I considered that part of his hotel property, I'm assuming it'll be part of his hotel license, but.
Okay, this'll be a way for us to find out. All right, folks, we've been discussing this for one hour, so, um, I'm gonna close the public hearing on, on this topic. Uh, then I'm gonna open the public hearing on the amendment to fees. Um, any questions, concerns from the public on the amendment to fees related to this? I'm gonna close the public hearing on the amendment to fees and I'm gonna open the, uh, public hearing, um, on the, it's the, the schedule K. Yeah, yeah, the amendment to schedule, uh, to appendix K. Any questions on that? Hearing now. Okay, thank you, we are gonna move back to item six. I do appreciate this discussion. Hearing done. Okay. Thank you. We are gonna move back to item six. I do appreciate this discussion, don't let me convey otherwise. I, yeah, I was gonna move back and a- and act on it, act on this, yep. Um, so, what we will do is, um, act on the short-term rental ordinance. How would the council like to proceed?
I'm making a motion that we approve as written, exempting Section six point two point one.
Second.
Uh, for, okay, for review, can, I would like it in the motion, motion if possible, um, about that meeting in August. Yep.
Um, so, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve it as written, exempting six point two point one, uh, pending further review for, um, this would be under regulatory review.
In July.
Yeah, in July.
Second.
Great. Questions, comments, concerns? All is in favor, opposed? Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, the, uh, how would the council like to proceed on the changes to the fees ordinance?
Most approve.
Second.
Second, and questions? Is it a favor? And the, uh, how would the council like to proceed on the amendment to Appendix K in terms of the definitions?
Motion approved. Second. Questions?
Is it a favor? Very good. Thank you, everyone. I do appreciate the discussion. All right. Next, we have a, uh, update from the Services Committee.
Yep, we, uh, just suggested to appoint of the Community Resilience Committee members, uh, Sherry Billings, Council Tracy Hare, Emily Fitzgerald, Stephen St. Peter Junior, and Rich Rotella.
Questions?
All is in favor.
Opposed.
I did that under nine A.
He just combined that with nine of us.
Yep, yep. Uh, let's see, what you said, I could do whatever, no.
Yeah.
Um. Um, under agenda items, I am gonna ask for, uh, a, a motion to approve adding the resolve that Sue handed out, um, at the beginning of the meeting around the salt contract.
Motion to approve, resolve twenty twenty-four forty-seven to award the salt contract to New England Salt.
To add it to the.
Add it to the agenda, sorry.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor, opposed? All right, so we'll, why don't we go ahead and take action on that one? You have the resolve in front of you, uh, for, uh, Resolve twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven, which is with New England Salt, where the price remains at seventy dollars a ton. Any comments you'd like to add on that?
This, we've been given the opportunity to hold the salt price for the third year in a row with New England Salt. Um, they're the ones who rescued us, uh, three years ago, when our contracted salt provider failed to provide us with salt and we ran out in the middle of the winter, and they're the ones who, they, and they've held the same price for us every year since. We are very close to Searsport, which is where it comes from, and we get the best price of anyone that they deliver to municipally, so.
Wonderful. Questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
All is in favor. Opposed? Thank you. Now, we'll go back to A. Uh, Resolve twenty twenty-four dash forty-five to approve the sewer commitment for the period one-one twenty twenty-four to three thirty-one twenty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, two cents.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion second. All is in favor. Opposed? Thank you. Uh, the next is a resolve, is Resolve twenty twenty-four dash four-six to approve eighteen thousand dollars for funding the twenty twenty-four Bay Festival.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in second. Any questions or comments?
We're good this year, Eddie?
We're good this year.
All right, all is in favor. Opposed? All right. We're trucking along now, aren't we? All right, let's see, so we have taken care of nine. Next is item, uh, ten, approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds. The first is, uh, David Hassanbank, MAP zero-three-nine, lot zero-one-six, tax lien certificate dated, uh, June the sixteenth of twenty twenty-two. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Second.
Me down.
You know, I didn't even, all, all is in favor. Opposed? Thank you.
They'll just be abstained.
Yeah. Counselor, yep. Uh, next is Frank and Alyssa Sulfur, MAP zero-one-eight, lot zero-two-one, tax lien certificate dated six sixteen twenty twenty-two. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion second. All is in favor. Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next is George J. Haru and Angel M. Linscott, MAP zero-one-nine, lot zero-four-three, tax lien certificate dated six twenty-six twenty twenty-two.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion in second. All is in favor. Thank you. And last, uh, Cheryl Best Storms, uh, formerly Arturo Jimenez, MAP zero-two-nine, lot zero-three-seven, tax lien certificates dated six sixteen twenty twenty-two, six twenty-eight twenty twenty-three, and sewer lien certificates dated three twenty-two twenty twenty-three, ten nineteen twenty twenty-three, three twenty-three twenty twenty-two, ten nineteen twenty twenty-two, and three twenty-six twenty twenty-four. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
All is in favor. Opposed?
I would note that I spoke with USDA today, and they have, they are issuing their release on the mortgage that was fully on that property directly to her. So, now that's done, and she can report that at the registry.
Next is the Town Manager Report. Oh, I have a reading.
Thank you. I always lose it. Um, the town dock and Marina floats will be going in, where they're permitting, next Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, the waterfront bathrooms will be open starting Friday, tomorrow, the twenty-sixth, and the Marina opens for the season on May fifteenth. Um, the contract who's building the floats is hard at work in getting the ones done that, um, are necessary for the opening of that. They won't, they won't have all of them, but they will have, um, some of the worst, first ones done before we start the season. Um, there were some communication lapses which occurred recently, which resulted in a conflict of space use at the, use at the baseball field and the area around it. And as a result, I received a multi-page list of questions from Skate Buck Sport, which I am in the process of answering. I've spoken to a representative of the group and suggested that once I finish answering the questions, that we set up a meeting with the Infrastructure Committee. Um, when that site was selected, we discussed how it would work, and since the group is now in the process of planning for more permanent structures and evaluating their locations, I think it would be a good time, um, for them to meet with the Town's Infrastructure Committee so that everybody's on the same page in who's on first and who's in charge and all those kind of things in terms of the use of that site, so that we avoid the, um, miscommunication that results in moving equipment and all that kinda stuff on that date. So, I'm in hopes that we can do that. Um, a- as you know, I, I sent you a message, I, that I, I sent out an email, um, to all the town managers that are on the list serve. I called it a fishing expedition to see if I could, anyone would say that they were being
Coreded?
Coreded by, good word, by Buck Sport Mill for use of landfill, and, um, I caught a fish, and that fish is no longer interested in swimming in this pond. Um, there was a second fish, um, that's a municipality that has chosen, um, not to, uh, divulge their name to the department or to the town. Um, I went one step further today, called the consultant to Buck Sport Mill and reminded them that, um, municipalities have public processes, not just Buck Sport, but any that are considering this, and, um, said he was aware of that. So, we'll see where it goes, but, um, I, I would assume that fairly short order, we would have some idea who this entity is because they can't go anywhere without discussing, um, their plan with the town and the department, so that's my report.
Questions for Sue?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Pushy.
We have already taken care of twelve, so, uh, next is thirteen, discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public. Open it up to the public.
Thank you, Ralph Chapman. Uh, briefly, on the matter of the landfill. Uh, there's reference to a potential buyer, um, and a sale we normally think of as something of value being sold and the buyer pays the seller. In this case, as in other cases, um, that I have dealt with in the past, uh, where the liabilities exceed the assets, the sale price is negative, which means that, in essence, the seller is paying the buyer to take it. And I just wanna make you aware of that, because the important thing is, does the buyer, who is accepting the money to take the liabilities, have enough assets to be able to afford the liabilities that they've just purchased? And, and the case, for example, of the mine site in Blue Hill, the answer is no. The corporate entities that had the liabilities sold their liabilities, meaning they paid money to the liability holding company, which does not have enough assets to pay for the liabilities they have then purchased. And so, it's important for, for you to recognize that that's the situation that we may be in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No. Thank you. Don White, Buck Sport. Um, in the reply, uh, the Commissioner to you, the Mayor's letter, uh, Mayor of Biscanet's letter, um, there were two additional monitoring wells that were placed, um, that were asked, uh, of, of aim, or whatever you wanna call it at this point. It does not include the gentleman, I think, who spoke to you a while back, uh, requesting that his well be monitored of concern, considerable concerns that he's had in his life and his neighbor that he spoke to you about. Um, and certainly has made public and spoke to us in a community forum a while back. So, I just wanna point out that there may be other interested peoples that should be considered here for, uh, monitoring, and that gentleman did come to you and ask for that, that help. I assume in these inspection reports that, on, on the landfill, that are supposed to come out yearly, did, did we get this year's, uh, reports?
It's due to them by April twenty-ninth.
Thank you. And, um, I think these reports, unless, and please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, are done by Haley Ward, a consultant based in Bangor with offices in Massachusetts and Florida. It is a, you would know that, Susan, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's reviewed then by the department, uh, for their input and public, uh, input. Is Haley Ward also the people who do the monitoring of these wells?
Yes.
Okay. Haley Wa- is Haley Ward, in a conversation I had with you this morning, Susan, Haley Ward, I think, if I heard correctly, that Haley Ward was an agent that was, uh, approaching entities regarding the sale of the landfill, is that correct? Am I incorrect?
I, I believe that they have had discussions with entities on behalf of their client. I am not privy to all of their discussions, but I know that, I do know that from the ones that I've talked to, the intermediary has been their engineers.
Their engineers, which are Haley Ward.
That's correct.
So, Haley Ward is not only ac- acting as the monitoring folks, they now are brokers, perhaps, if our information is somewhat correct. I would think for a layperson like myself that may cast some thoughts about making sure these wells are monitored correctly, significantly, not just the little surface things, because we're talking about serious well monitoring here with PFAS, Forever Chemicals, and those kinds of things that have, that are serious. And we've shown that, and there was one, there was one year that they didn't do well monitoring at all in one of those reports. I took some time this afternoon and read, read them over again. So, I, I, I think we have to keep a real close eye on, on this situation with well monitoring, and I think it would be great, uh, appropriate for the town to bend over, bend to people who really are close by and want this, want this monitored. We have known in the past that landfills pervert water, groundwater. It, that's done here, St. Regis bought out a couple a long time ago, and it's done that, and we know from discussions with other landfill, uh, friends that this happens, and it makes sense. So, I would ask that, and with Haley Ward being involved, I would, uh, they're now not only doing some monitoring, but if they're also doing some brokering, I think, uh, cast, for me, as a, as a layman, uh, some serious, uh, uh, observation. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich, can you accept that?
Yes, ma'am.
Just saying.
Anyone, anyone from the, I mean, excuse me, from the council?
Nope.
I have one thing there.
Sure.
Um, the, the, uh, bushes out on the, uh, Civil Lake Road by the lake, by the water measure, they're getting that awful large, uh, through the, uh, the asses there. I know probably three, four years ago, they were cut back.
For visibility.
Visibility.
I know what you're talking about.
Yep. That's giving me issues.
I just received an email that said, if they're, if they're redoing the docks in town, I was wondering if those docks can be repurposed for the frog pond that is the, in the walking trails by the church. Those docks that are there are currently underwater. I know the frog pond is used highly by the schools and a lot of people in the town. Would any of those docks be, that were taken out, be usable there, Rich?
Be very large for that pond.
Yeah, we'd need to, we'd need to take measurements. There, the plan was to sell, but of course, if it's a town in this need, I think we'd see what's underneath there, because sometimes during the year, there is little to no water in, in the pond. And at current time, when you have all the melting and all the rain we've had, there's a lot, so now it's sinks in, so we need to see how they're built, and is it an issue where they need footers, or is it an issue where the wood's going back, so they're sitting in the water that long and it's not pressure treated and yet they're probably rotted and need to be replaced. We can, we'll find some people and we'll go up and take a look at it.
I, I just said we would take a look at it, okay?
Yep.
I had talked to Rich about that a while ago, and whoever emailed you, probably the same person, but regardless of the time of year, though, if, if the kids are gonna be up there on break and walking trails, if we could make it usable.
Yeah.
That would be, that'd be good.
Yeah, I just don't know if the float is the right answer, but.
It's awful large.
That's half the size of the pond.
Right.
If it's, if it's cheap enough, I'm in.
At a point of clarification, it's, it's actually called, it's a Vernal Pool, is what it's actually called.
Right. Okay. Uh, anything else? Okay. Uh, next is upcoming public hearing, designation of topics for committee assignment and scheduling of committee meetings. I know there was going to be an infrastructure committee meeting this evening, but it's being postponed. Do we anticipate being at a place where we could schedule that?
Um, Luke, do we anticipate that we would have the numbers for the animal shelter by the May ninth meeting, or would it be those following meetings?
Probably the following.
Okay, so we have a baseball field wall committee meeting on the ninth at six o'clock, and the animal shelter would be on the
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third at six o'clock.
Sorry. Twenty-third, six.
No dying.
Oh, my God. Okay. Any other committees, any, any here? Perfect. All right. Last but certainly not least, we do. Last but certainly not least, we do move on to budget. The items for this evening are in your binders. We're starting off with administration. Or am I incorrect? Nope, we are starting off, oh, no, I knew better than that, it's sewer.
Yes.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Yep.
So the only salaries that show in a sewer budget is fifty percent of the wage of one of our front office people who does utility billing is charged against sewer, because she does the billing and the collections and liens and all that. So that's the salary. We no longer have an employee that works at the plant. Mike Jackson resigned, retired, and we contracted a hundred percent with main water for the operation of the plant and maintenance of the lines. So sellers is that, the benefits of that, those associated with our, our office person who does it. The, uh, the, a, a large increase in the proposed budget this year relates to sledge site cost. We talked about the cost of disposing of sludge now because of the whole thing that it can't be treated the way it was and it has to be landfilled, and it's way more expensive than it was before. That request was made to me from Dave Micho for an increase in that. Our electric cost is up because the electric rates went up, even though we have thirty percent of the cost of our electric bill being offset by solar. So if it wasn't for solar, it would be thirty percent higher than the number you see there. The, the other items, which are all just, the, the debt service is, the debt service on the swirl concentrator that is down here, and the debt service on the, the treatment plant, which is there too. The contracted services number is the amount we pay main water annually for the operation and maintenance of the plant and the lines. The, very little has changed, however, the costs have gone up, and we've not had a sewer rate increase since 2015. Coming into 2025, we will need to talk about that because we are not going to be supporting ourselves if we don't. Some of our larger sewer users are, have used less green head lobster when it's not in production, that's a large user, that, that hasn't. And then the, the treatment, Berry Septic, which is a very large user also, has been doing less as well. Those are major impacts to our sewer billing. But beyond that, nine years without a rate increase is, is a long time. And it was a major increase when it happened because it was when the mill closed. But we will have to talk about it. We'll have an evaluation of the, of our costs and our flows, and then a recommendation will come to the council for, we've set the rates for this year, that the rates would be set for next year. Happy to answer any questions.
Why don't you make note that 2025 is in it?
Do you have the gentleman in the audience that has?
Sorry, if I missed somebody raising their hand.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, hi.
Hi.
Can you come up to the mic?
Anyway. All I wondered is, new regulations on PFAS, do you have any anticipation of what those related costs might be to your operations?
The, the new regulations in regard to drinking water are, the, the output of our, the PFAS in our, our treatment plant sludge, that already is, we're addressing that through landfill, not by, but our PFAS rate at our treatment plant was not in excess of the earlier regulation. But the, our treatment, which is, is to, to get to that. But the, the water issue, which is main water, the town doesn't run the water district for the purposes of supplying water. I, I am not, I do not believe that, that Silver Lake, the, the water supply has any PFAS considerations in terms of our drinking water, in, in terms of that level of stuff. No, but the sewer stuff we take care of because we, we have to landfill it right now. There's no other way to deal with it. Everyone ready to move on?
Yep.
I would remind you that we have Rachel with us tonight. If you really want to know the answers, just some stuff, so. Okay, the first account is general government. And general government is my salary, the entire front office salary, your salaries, the cost of our election clerks, my expenses, expenses related to the council activities, office staff expenses, which generally are, are related to if they've traveled, attended a school, the expenses related to those things. Office supplies, office supplies are purchased through the town office and then split across the various and sundry accounts and credited back in that way. You will note that software support looks like we stopped doing something. What we formally did was we had our contract with the RSU under software support and administration. And we had other pieces of the cost of IT to the town in other locations. And in this budget, I have extracted the IT costs that serve the entire community, that serve our whole operation, such as our licensing for our email and our Adobe subscriptions and our, all of those things that are common, and put them in the same account with the PEG channel, which is an outside, which is operated by RSU 25 for us. So when we get there, so that's, that's software support. The only thing left in that is the licensing cost for Trio, which is specific to administration. It's, it's the program that runs all the programs we use in this building only. So that's, that's why that still lives there. Postage advertising, there's not a lot of change in this budget. The, I reluctantly raised the legal costs, but I'm tired, but these are, some of this is not normal legal costs. It's the fact that we have a perennial legal cost from down the street. Tax lien costs, that's our cost of placing these liens, but when we get to the revenue account, there, there's a revenue line item because the property owners pay those when they pay them off. Audit, the eighteen thousand two hundred contained part of last year, all end this year. So we, in that, the expense line, that's why that's high. As I said, there's not a lot of change in this. Our, our office staff salary is somewhat inflated over the three percent because we have a retirement coming in at the end of the year. Jackie Hunt is retiring, and when she does, the payout of her vacation and the portion of the accrued sick time is also included in this, in this budget so that we can manage that and move forward with the rest of that year. Which makes that a bit higher. Any questions? I can tell you, in two years, the not, the top line will be a lot bigger.
Yes. That is a very good point.
Just saying. It won't be me, but it'll be, it'll be somebody else. Okay, the next line item is, is planning, which is our code enforcement slash planning slash E911 addressing slashed licensed plumbing inspector slash health officer slash person.
Everything from the sheet from two meetings ago.
Yes.
All of that.
Yes.
And the, the item under part-time assistant is, is the continued scanning of our records, digitizing the paper records that we have for eons that make it easier to actually find something and a more permanent record. Planning board salary is for the, the planning board members, secretary. Obviously, that's self-explanatory. Expenses is if they go to a training or do something like that. We're still, I still have Hancock County Planning Commission in there. They're, they're active again, they weren't for a while. We have our second part of the codification of our ordinances that you approved last year. We have a percentage of that cost that is underway and being reviewed, and it's pretty fascinating when you read it all over. But that is a, that is in process as well. The salary is, is more than the three percent, and we've been working on catch-up. We're still in the middle of the road for a salary that covers this many people in one body. So that is difference there. Other than that, that's, that's it.
Any questions there?
Next, we have the assessor. Who's, and Luke is here, Caitlin is here too. Let me make this big enough so you can see it. There we go. We have, we have the same basic expenses. There is funding in this year's budget for a new computer for Caitlin because hers has been recommended for retirement by our IT person who is also here with us this evening. The contracted services is our, keeps our GIS mapping up to date, which, I don't know if you folks have, anyone who hasn't used it, but the GIS function on the front page of our website is
It's amazing.
Pretty awesome. That is
I use it a lot.
I've been on it a lot.
Been a game changer
Same.
For us. As I said, other than that, I would note that we're going to be using a contracted assessor to actually do the commitment this year, which will involve, involve probably four to six hours of work because Caitlin will have done all the, the legwork and stuff, but Caitlin's going to have a baby. I, it's a shock to everyone, I know, but, so she's not going to be here when we do the, but all of the work will have done, and the contract assessor simply does the commitment, uses evaluations that have been to do the commitment. That is because she's going to be out at the time we do the commitment in July. So that is, it's not a huge expense, but I'm just notifying you right now that
She's going to have another baby here.
She's going, and she's not going to have her baby here. We're not doing this. Anyway. So that is, that is the plan for dealing with that eventuality. And, but she's working hard to make sure that everything's done before she leaves us for a bit. Any questions? Okay. The municipal building. Here we sit. Custodian salary, that's not a, it, it's a contracted cleaning service that we use for here, the police station, and the public safety building, and the senior center. It's the same one, but this is the cost to here. Building supplies, obviously, what it takes to go along with that. Repair and maintenance is primarily the darned elevator, which we seem to spend huge amounts on, but there are contracts that we sign for the maintenance of the elevator, and those are there. Heating fuel.
There isn't more that this building needs this year?
In regular operations, no. We're not talking about the roof in here. Or some of the water issues.
Around the windows, siding.
That's not part of the operational budget. And then water and sewer, we don't pay a sewer bill, but the cost of water for this building, that's what that is, and obviously our electric bill. And this bill, this building is one of them that gets the drop-down of electricity from the town garage array that we pay primarily revision energy for those, that electricity because the bill here is low. Again, that is it's pretty standard for operations. Okay. Here's the one nobody wants to talk about, but the, the workless compensation is, is, workless compensation. I will say that the most recent person I've talked to said that our experience mod was looking good for this year. And if our experience mod is the factor that they multiply your premium by to see what it's really going to be, and ours was not good for a couple of years, based on a couple of accidents. One major one at the fire department where Jesse fell off the ladder, the training, and was, had a whole lot of stuff. So that is improving, which is why it can stay at the same number. Social security, I made an adjustment of $4,976 because I made an adjustment to the wages, if you remember, under the fire department for their per diems. We reduced that to seventy-five percent of what was requested. So I, I reduced the accompanying social security in this line item. That's the reduction there. Group life insurance is what the town provides. Main state retirement is the town's share of police, of all of our employees that have main state retirement. When we switch When we switched did the last two contracts in both police and fire, the rates for main state retirement is much higher than it was previously. Income protection, which is provided by the town for when employees are injured outside the workforce. Unemployment, we're a self-pay for unemployment, so if someone is collecting, we write them a check. We hadn't expended any through February of twenty-nine, Rachel, have we? We still have, we still have had no unemployment for this year. Our general liability is our insurance policy for all of our, everything we own, except for it gets a portion to sewer and our public liability, insurance, they, our main municipal is doing an another evaluation in May. We've had, we have to provide copies of the plans for our buildings and they're doing inspections to determine building values because we're, they need to insure for what it would cost us to actually do this and some of our values are, are not. They haven't kept up with the current trend of through the roof, so they're in the process of that. But it's a twelve percent increase, but it reflects the addition of four people, which is the three firefighters from last year that were partially funded by ARPA and one police officer this year. So, and things like health insurance and all of those, those change by rates, but they also change when people change from single to married or up, down and sideways, but that's the benefit cost for all employees. Now, it resides in general government, which makes administration look really high, but that is, does not all related to, to this building. I mean, that's all of the employees for the town are in that pie. Contingency is $12,000. We budget about a thousand dollars a month for what we didn't else. It, it gets used for the employee, annual employee lunch, it gets used for those kind of things. Okay, here we are in the brand-new category. So I, I tried to pull out from other places what it was before and then, but the maintenance or repair that shows that we spent thirty-six hundred dollars out of a thousand, that's not, that was somewhere else, but we paid for, it, it wasn't paid for there, it, it
We're over.
Well, it was, it was, it falls under what you'd see up under software contracts now is where it was, it was the Adobe license and the whatever BE
Backup software.
What's that?
Backup software.
Okay, backup software. It's got a something with a twenty-four on the end, I don't know what it means, but that, that's what that is. And if you look at the page behind that, Jim has done a really good job of identifying every single, all of the programs it takes to sort of make it go. But I, I think it's important that, that we're transparent about saying, yes, our basic IT costs overall are a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year for the community. But that is, that's an honest representation and it's not stuck in four other places, which is what it is.
New age is expensive.
What's that?
New age is expensive.
Indeed. Well, the protecting everything we've got is as expensive a, a process as, that is, and, and a lot of that is in this budget. Then we have economic development, which is Mr. Rotella. The, Rich's budget is pretty much set. The non-municipal agency funding are the outside agency groups that were given to him as part of his budget that removed them from the one percent. I know I'm away from the microphone, just a minute. It removed them from the social services formula because it was deemed that things like Fort Knox and Wednesdays on Main were actually economic development programs. They were, brought people to the community, that's what, so they were funded there. What I want to make clear that maybe hasn't been clear to some is there's been some expectation on behalf of some of these agencies that being in Rich's budget meant that they had access to funds in his budget other than the allocation for things like advertising and marketing and all those kind of things. And I just, I just want to be clear with the council that, and others, that that's not true. That, that Rich's budget is not constructed to support advertising, marketing, et cetera, for these non-municipal agency-funded groups. And there's been some misunderstanding about that apparently because some of them have said, council, we're in your budget, the council's put us in your budget. And I'm just saying that my interpretation is that being in that budget doesn't give anyone access to anything other than the funding in that line item, which otherwise is a big stressor for Rich's budget to try and do the things he needs, so.
The, the, the line item doesn't restrict them being able to do it within their allocation, right? The advertising and so forth.
They, they, they're advertising, whatever they're gonna do is gonna come out of the money that there's, it's in their allocation, not in Rich's budget.
Which is the non-municipal agency funding.
That's correct. Those are, the list of the
Whatever they get out of line number ninety-four period.
What they get is comes out of ninety-four. But, but I
Or their pocket.
I think that it's been a, a there's been a misunderstanding because Rich has, has heard that since the council put them in the budget that there's access. I'm, I just want to be as part of this budget saying that unless one of you tells me that's true, that's, that's not the way we are gonna operate it. But it's too much stress on, Rich only has a small amount for himself. And so friends of Fort Knox, Main Street Bucksport and Wednesdays on Main would not have but I, I know that Wednesday, that Main Street Bucksport is in this budget for twenty thousand dollars and that was recommended by economic development. I would also ask that if that's the case, that that you treat it the same way we've treated it last year, which is they, they would get an allocation by providing something they were doing, that they would, last year, the, they accessed a very small amount of the funds that were appropriated because they, they weren't as active. And, and so are we following that model that if they have a project or that kind of thing that we're, we're providing funding then, or are we doing it, that we just write them a check that the, when the funding is there?
No, I think it's as needed.
Well, that's what we did last year.
Unless it's a drastic change, unless they come forward and say, we're gonna hire somebody here.
They're gonna do a lot less than they get less.
I just want to make sure that when we're going through this, that we're all in a, I understand what the direction is supposed to be with, that's what we did last year, as we said. Since there's been a
I think it's better for the money to be in our bank if they're not using it.
Yeah, and they can come out and sport if they ever use.
Well, it came in handy because ten thousand of that money like that would
I think that's a great idea.
Right.
And it doesn't mean they can't do what they need to do, but if they're
No, 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 I'm just saying that they're, they're in a re something. They're, they're
Restructuring.
Restructuring, what, what would you call it, Rich? They're
A reorg, they're reorganizing.
Reorganizing is a very good word.
I think they might
Are they active?
They're re
Like, cause if they're not, like, I guess I, I think, like, if they're not active, then why would we put it in this budget?
When they came into the, to the meeting, they, there was there was a plan to be more active. There was a plan.
Yeah.
There was a plan, there was actually a plan to be more active and have more things this year.
Yeah.
And they seemed very genuine. But I think we can handle it where they come forward to get it. But I, I agree with handling it the same way you handled it last year. You have an event, you need X, you get X, you don't get.
For things like this, we should be results-based. You produce, you have a plan, you get the money.
Yep.
It begs the question. In the last twelve, since we had this discussion, what, 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 I mean, if we're gonna ask the question, let's just ask the question. What has Main Street Bucksport done in the last twelve months?
So I was anticipating this and I was on Facebook today and since September, when the International Maritime Film Festival was had, there have been three Facebook posts. The Smores Bar had no posts, that's the event that tags along with the holiday lights parade that's put on by the town. And there was a single post about the bridge to gap race, which is happening Saturday after next on the fourth of May.
That was a post to acknowledge that they were no longer doing it, is that correct?
Uh, no, um, so that was, so the race was, they were in partnership originally, Main Street Bucksport was in partnership with Crow Athletics. Crow Athletics handed the event over to the Downeys Family YMCA and Main Street Bucksport is a beneficiary and providing assistance. There have been no Main Street Bucksport meetings to date in twenty twenty-four.
Rich, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, well, it's, it's honest, I, I, at the meeting, I, you know, there was some banter back and forth between the committee and I stood up and one person is, is doing and did a lot of work for the committee, one that you would probably expect the least who's going through the most. And the rest of the committees, it's it, it's not going the direction per the conversation that was last had at the Economic Development Committee meeting. There's not been an email or a meeting since and I'm disappointed because I went out on a limb personally to say that this is gonna happen because in order to get the bridge to gap race, that's what happened, but now it's radio silence.
Sure.
Which is nice for me because I got more free time, but it's not what the council of the taxpayers are asking for.
So I, I guess here's what I will say to that, is in years past, I have, when Main Street Bucksport has been perhaps, let's just say, not in a reorganization and, and perhaps doing more things with an actual calendar of events. I've been very supportive of Main Street Bucksport as just one person on this council. Because of that, if there isn't going to be a calendar of events, if there isn't going to be involvement, I I, as one person on this council cannot justify continuing that line of thought. I'll stop there.
I have a clarifying question, has, in the past, has, has the money supported general operations like an employee or just typically projects?
So it's hard to decipher where the money's going, right? Cause
Right.
Because if I'm a fan of Main Street Bucksport, I can say it's going to events, it's going to rent XYZ. If I'm opposed to Main Street Bucksport, I can say it's going to pay the director. So it's going to the big overall kitty and money's being dispersed and that's with the way the council has done it this past year, it went directly to events and when results were delivered, which I think has, has worked, worked out well. And, and then again, as I pointed out from back there, not up here, you know, cause they didn't use all that money, that ten thousand dollars that was left in that budget went to a very worthwhile cause to, to the reach school for those kids to be able to go to Boston. Which is, which is great, it, it was already allocated, it was there, it didn't have to be put back into fund balance. So worthwhile endeavor. I would agree with the town manager. I will say, I know there are some events that are not coming back this year because that was talked about before, the art festival will be one of them. So you've got the Bridge to Gap Race, which is technically a YMCA and Main Street will help with volunteers and marketing. Then there's the Smores Lounge, which is part of the town's Holiday Lights Parade. There's the International Maritime Film Festival, which is solely a Main Street Bucksport event. And I wanna say that's it.
Well, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you may not have an answer and that's fine, Rich, I'm not here, I'm not asking you to answer for any of this, except to say that every time I've heard something brought up about the, the Maritime Film Festival this coming year, it's if, it's always followed with a comma, if that happens. So my question is, I think we're back at that same point of if there are going to be things that money could potentially be available. But I, again, just as one person, go ahead and do your reorganization, et cetera, et cetera, but I, I
A better use, a better use of money, I think, is following the formula that's been used with Main Street Bucksport. And it might be for all, because it might be a good place for where Bay Festival should fall under instead of asking somewhere, because there's more accountability there. For events that are town-based, Ghostport, Bucksport Bay Festival, International Maritime Film Festival, whoever's putting it on. This is, this is the expenditure, this is what the town has available to put on events to support the town. That way, we know that if five thousand dollars is going to International Maritime Film Festival, they've gotta pay for the Alamo, they've gotta pay for movies, you know, what have you there. And if a thousand dollars goes to someone as a stipend for doing the work, it's not twenty thousand, it's clear and measurable results of what you have. How many people came, how many people watched online, so this is another thing impacted by COVID, right? That I believe there was more attendance online than in person. So if this happens, I think was a way of saying, based on results from, you know, since COVID has happened, we're seeing more of an online presence. Do we really need to use the Almo? And I could be far stretched, we haven't had a meeting in, until twenty twenty-three, so. But I, I think that formula might serve the town and the council going forward in the future. Because Dean does the request of the fireworks for the town on behalf of the town, well, really, he gets the permits for us and does the, the stuff on his end, but the town's paying directly to the, to the fireworks company to skip out the middleman for efficiencies.
Yep.
So I, I, that might be a nice way to look at it going forward. With that, and Polak is still doing what Polak does on a very limited basis of asking for funds and
Maybe between now and May ninth, when we look at what the budget's gonna be that you wanna send out, we could get some kind of information on where they, they stand right now.
Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think Wednesday on Main too, I just, I don't hear much, you know, quite a while from either group, I just, I'm curious.
She has a whole plan.
Paul is, Paul is in Florida right now and Paul is actually working with, with, with me and, and actually with the Ellsworth American, we're doing a big, she's promoting her stuff, I've taken money out of my advertising to help promote the Wednesdays on Main. In return, on her Wednesdays on Main poster, there's the Bucksport Bay Festival, so give and take. And I just got the, the proof today of the ad. Paula is away, so when, when they come to the Economic Development Committee, Paula always has someone available to represent Wednesdays on, on Main. I will say her events, especially at Brown Hall, exceed expectations. At one time I was up there, that whole parking lot and halfway up Franklin Street was
Uh, excuse me, the concert last summer.
Yes.
It ended up itself was
And, and the Frog Town Mountain Puppeteers is always a big hit, it's always a sell-out. That Alamo holds one forty-five when you put chairs out and there's one forty-five and sometimes parents give up seats so other And sometimes parents give up seats so other kids can watch, so.
She has quite a schedule this summer, doesn't she?
She, she does have an ambitious schedule, you know, so she lost, um, the Darling's sponsorship, but she's went out and got others. So she's putting in more work than instead of the Darling's handing out the money, where she's having to find new and different sponsors, but still offering the same events. It might not be what we were once used to pre-COVID, but Paula knows her audience and, and, and her marketing. So, um, I, I think it's working great and I, and I'm glad to see Bacchus is coming back. The middle school production that Jess, um, did with the middle school kids was fantastic. And I'm trying to work in partnership with her and getting a comedian up there and just really trying to help spearhead and get more things going. So I, I really think going forward, I think, yeah, have these groups come to the Economic Development Committee, but maybe make it all, because Dean for the, um, for, is using more money because of the whole lighting plan and everything going on and needing less, wants to do more marketing and collaboration with the town. We did it last year as a trial and whether it wasn't great, says for head construction, but, um, Dean's working on numbers for us to see what the impact was there. Um, and just really quick, a little off topic, I met with a company online, um, Placer AI. And I can tell you from, uh, March twenty twenty, uh, three to February twenty twenty-four, eighteen thousand eight hundred visitors came to Bucksport. That information is tracked by a cell phone. And I know people from Los Angeles were here, Amarillo, Texas, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, uh, all this different data. So if they go to the fort, that cell phone is being tracked wherever they go and spending money. So they gave me some printouts of, you know, how much of a financial impact the town had based off of that. So solely in our downtown area. Cause I wanted to know what did that do for this, not US Route one. US Route one is a byway to Ellsworth and Bar Harbor, that's where your chain stores are. This is where the heart of the community is in the downtown. So I'll over, look over that stuff, but Dean has formed a fantastic partnership with the town. And I'm glad the way that the committee, um, treated Dean when he was here. They actually, Dean asked for a certain amount and the committee actually wanted to give more, um, to help with that continued marketing effort between the two as a collaboration. And we're not going to do it, um, as hastily because of the construction down there. We've, we're putting together a plan, uh, with our person, so.
So we're using Big Brother technology to.
Well, they, they want me to buy their software, but I'm continuing to take the free stuff that they're going to continue to give me.
Free is good.
Just, just to talk on this line item again, though, the, the money for this is too valuable to not pay attention to where it all goes. So if certain groups are not going to use them to their full potential, then it needs to go to other places where Rich or, uh, economic development as a whole can maximize on.
I, I can show you right here. So expended from February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, fifty-four hundred. Five thousand was for fireworks, four hundred went to Main Street Bucksport.
Yep.
Out of twenty thousand. Now, since then, the ten thousand was allocated out of there. Main Street Bucksport used four thousand, uh, four hundred dollars this year.
And, yeah, what, Rachel, what?
I've given, I've done Wednesdays on Main since then. So Wednesdays on Main's four thousand has been allocated out of that.
As well. So yeah, so another fourteen thousand's come out of that, that's nineteen out of thirty-four thousand with, we've got about a month and six days before the end of the fiscal year.
That was through February, but what you've just itemized in the difference is what wasn't expended for Main Street Bucksport.
Right. So essentially nine thousand out of thirty-four thousand, if you take out.
Well, then add, then add the ten for the, um.
Right, but that was a special.
But that was a special, so yeah, so yes, ninety, essentially ninety-four hundred dollars has been utilized out of what was allocated to thirty-four thousand five hundred.
No, I appreciate this, Rich, I, um, and I appreciate you answering the questions. I, I kind of did that to you on purpose because I wanted to highlight that when these things do, when the council moves these things into your budget, it, it adds responsibility and work to you whether we intend it to or not. And so I, I think that needs to be highlighted because you're here tonight answering my questions, whereas others, for whatever reason, I'm attaching no judgment to what I'm about to say, are not. So, um, I think that's important for us to keep in mind as well.
Well, thank you. We're good?
Good job, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
I think that's the last one, isn't it?
It is.
It is.
That is it for tonight's, is, and, um, so today's the twenty-fifth. We do not have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday. Our next meeting is the ninth. We're back on just every other week, but on the night, um, you'll be looking over the budget. You'll be doing public works, which will be here that night, and cemeteries and revenues. And then you will, um, be looking over the entire budget, decide what's going out to public.
So yeah, as, as we're compiling questions, seems like we have a couple of.
Questions and, and your preferences related to social agencies in particular, that one is, that number can't stay. Well, unless you change your policy, then you can do that. Right now, it doesn't work.
You, you could keep the number to stay, but make it so that you need to have a request of the money. And then you can utilize.
Oh, I was, I was talking about a different budget, not this one.
The, the one from last week.
The one from last.
Oh, I would even, that's right.
Anything else?
Missed that one.
Good, Chair, inter motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor, opposed, thank you everyone, I appreciate it.